November 17th will now come to water. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
DeVeau.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Laporte.
Here. Announcement of the Open Public Meeting Law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice, adopted a reorganization meeting, and filed with the county clerk in Post in the Administration Building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Duffy.
Pledge of allegiance. To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing. Come on in silence, for every woman and women of God while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Take a motion to approve the minutes.
I've got a motion.
Second. DeVeau.
Second by DeVeau. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVeau.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. I'm sorry. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Take a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by DeVeau, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVeau.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Administrator's report.
Oh, thank you, Director. First on my agenda is we have Mr. Anthony Vancheri here, who missed our Italian Heritage Month celebration last month. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Lazara.
Anthony, come on.
Get up there.
Yeah, Marie.
Come on, love. It told me to get up there.
You're a team.
Hurry up.
You're a team. So, we celebrated Italian-American Month last month, and up in West Mulford, it was a little far, but I know Tony, you would have been there if you could have been. But we didn't want to let this go by without acknowledging that Anthony is one heck of a veteran and Italian-American. I don't know. I know in so many ways, but I hear both of them together. So, Anthony's here because we did recognize him for Italian-American Month. Ann Marie is also Italian-American, his wife, and they work as a team, so I felt that it was necessary to bring both of you up tonight. If you'll just indulge me for a minute, I'll read you the proclamation. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Anthony Tony Vancheri in honor of Italian-American Heritage Month. Whereas Tony Vancheri was born in 1948 in Liege, Belgium, to Sicilian parents from the town of Villa Rosa in the province of Enna, following his father Dokamo's courageous decision to seek work and stability for his family after World War II. Whereas in 1953, the Vancheri family immigrated to the United States, first arriving in Hoboken, New Jersey, and soon settling in Patterson, a city that would become Tony's lifelong home and where he met his beloved wife, Ann Marie. Whereas in 1968, Tony was drafted into the United States Army and served honorably as a combat medic during the Vietnam War, earning his American citizenship while in service, a testament to his deep loyalty to his adopted country. Whereas Tony Vancheri founded the Vietnam Veterans for America Patterson Chapter 33 to honor the 33 brave soldiers from Patterson who lost their lives in the Vietnam War while also creating a space of support and solidarity for returning veterans in need. And whereas throughout his life, Tommy Tony has exemplified the values of hard work, sacrifice, love of family, and devotion to community, standing as a symbol of the American dream, achieved through perseverance and pride in his heritage. Whereas his story not only honors his family's immigrant legacy, but also serves as an inspiration to future generations of Italian-Americans and all those who seek opportunity and purpose in the United States. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Tony for the significant contributions he has made and will continue to make, and the exemplary service he has devoted to the County of Passaic and to the community. So therefore, be it proclaimed that this board wishes Tony Vancheri health, happiness, and continued success.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. First thing I want to say, I want to thank Ann Marie's father and my father for moving into Patterson, New Jersey, especially Liberty Street, where we fell in love with each other for the rest of our lives. I love you. I think I did want to show everybody that I still have my green card. Yeah, cute little guy, wasn't it? I hear. And, but, growing up in Patterson, especially in the Toto section, and Ann and I went to Central High School, we used to take the 12 bus downtown. And then in 1965, in September, Kennedy High School was built. And that's a half a block away from me and a block away from Ann Marie, so we couldn't get late there anymore. And then in the morning, I would hear, "You up?" She would knock on a window, "You up?" Okay. But it was, it was then that obviously the Vietnam War was going on and many of us were concerned. And many of us did go from Kennedy High School. Over 12 Central High School students were killed in Vietnam. Louis Coffencisco was the only Kennedy, even though he went to Central, but we graduated together in 66, and he was the only one to graduate from Kennedy, killed in Vietnam. Eastside had about 15 that passed away, well, in Vietnam. So, when I did get drafted, the first thing I thought about was becoming an American citizen. And since I was there and we had heard that if you had spent so much time, you would become it. Except my time was in Vietnam. And the story I like to tell, my CEO came up to me and said, "Would you like to become an American citizen and spend two weeks in Honolulu, Hawaii? Two weeks away from hell? Absolutely." And when we got to Hawaii, we were asked another question. Would you like to stay at the military base or at the Hilton Hotel on Waikiki Beach for free for 10 days? Wow, that, let's see, I'm here. And then on October 24th, 1969, Governor White at the time swore us all, and about 500 of us, and going back to Vietnam, I was an American. I was fighting for my country. And that meant a whole lot to me. Coming back to, Ann and I, we waited a couple of years and then we finally got married, and we decided to stay in our beloved Patterson. And some of the things I would like to tell you, though, is our sisters worked at Lazara's Bakery for years. Commissioner Laporte, the director, happens to be a paisano, Mrs. Vancheri, whose son served in Iraq as Marine, combat Marine, and of course, my brother Duffy, whose brother served, a combat wounded veteran in Vietnam. And so there's camaraderie in this room, not just on this side, but on that behind me. And I think to get this award as an Italian-American, as you know, the Roma Club, the beloved Roma Club, moved to Woodland Park, but it's still there. And one of my older brother, who's 91, was one of the original members on Chanty Street when they had all the Italian clubs down there. And my father was president of the Christopher Columbus Society, and all those years, with a lot of great Italian-Americans at that time. And the emphasis was always about where we were from, but where we were now. We brought our culture to America, and I hope every other culture does that to us. I mean, we're the only country that can say we have the, all the other 193 countries living in America. Isn't that outstanding? I mean, you could still do it now. Traveling downtown Patterson and smelling the Spanish food, especially, I'm a little favored to Peruvian, because I worked as a constable for about 15 years on the Peruvian Soccer League in Pennington Park. But of course, the Italian food is unbelievable. But this is definitely a, an honor for me and my wife, who has been at my side all these years, especially since she retired, and we do so much. I want to bring another note. The commissioners on this board have never said no to the Patterson Veterans Council in the Open Space Grant, which totaled over $800,000 for our four military parks in Patterson. And of course, our beloved late Congressman Bill Pascrell threw in another $500,000 a couple of years before he passed for the military parks, bringing our total to $1.3 million to regenerate the parks that honor our brothers and sisters who didn't come home and did come home back to our beloved Patterson. So on behalf of my wife and I, and my family, as you all met my son Christopher and my daughter, our daughter Michelle, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the commissioners for always being there for the veterans in this county. The Vietnam War is definitely the icing on the cake. And everyone that's here tonight, I'm honored and privileged to share with my beloved wife of 54 years, and thank you very much.
My neighbor.
Full service. The next item on my agenda is bittersweet. We are losing Assemblywoman Sumter as our representative in the 35th District. She's been a fierce advocate for the 35th District and for all of Passaic County, and big shoes to fill for those legislators taking your spot. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner DeVeau to recognize your years of service in the state legislature.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, Director Laporte, this is his act, but he thought in our robbery, John, for me to present to you, for those of you who don't know who I am, I am the worker and the brother of Assemblywoman Sumter, who, under her tutelage and leadership, I worked for 12 years. I've learned a lot from you, and in that 12 years, it allowed me to sit at that seat. You taught me how to listen and not speak. You taught me how to hold my tongue when I was passionate about something, and you told me what to fight for when it was right. You taught me how to debate facts and not feelings, and you taught me to do it for the right reason and for the right people. And when Administrator Matt said we are losing a pillar of the community, a pillar of democracy, a pillar of compassion, he has no idea. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, please stand. Let's give a round of applause. 14 years, this young lady has served and given up many things. I can go on and on about what we've gone through and what we have done, but that's not what tonight is about. Tonight is about us saying we see you. Not saw you. We see you. And even though you're transitioning into a different position to do what you've always done, we wanted to make sure we gave you your roses, which we have. Your favorite color is yellow, and you an alpha wife, among other things, and I'm going to ask my wife, Dr. DeVeau, to present that to you as well, and I'm going to read the proclamation. And on the other vows is from former Mayor Jane Warren, who gives her regards but could not be here due to medical reasons, but she wanted to make sure I said, and I promised to her when I spoke to her earlier, that I would give her regards, and those flowers are from her as well. All right? Now, Assemblywoman, I'm old, and I have to put on these glasses. The Board of County Commissioners, County of Passaic, New Jersey, whereas the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners to honor and recognize Assemblywoman Siobhan E. Sumter, E. standing for excellent, and her years of dedicated service to the state of New Jersey and the citizens of the 35th Legislative District, a region that encompasses parts of Bergen and Passaic County. And whereas, since joining the New Jersey General Assembly in 2012, Assemblywoman Sumter has served with distinction in key leadership roles, including Deputy Speaker and Majority Conference Leader, and has been a steadfast advocate for equality, opportunity, and justice. And whereas, as Chair of the Assembly Committee on Community Development and Women's Affairs and Vice Chair of the Environmental Natural Resources and Solid Waste Committee, she has championed efforts to combat community plight, close the wealth gap, uplift small businesses, and protect women's rights. And whereas, Assemblywoman Sumter legislative accomplishments include restoring voting rights to more than 80,000 residents on probation or parole. Let me read that again. Restoring voting rights to more than 80,000 residents on probation or parole, advancing black maternal and infant health, and promoting criminal justice and civil rights reforms that strengthens New Jersey's commitment to fairness and inclusion. And whereas, she has made history as the first woman to chair the New Jersey Legislative Black Caucus. Come on, y'all. And her long career in mental health and family services include her leadership as President and CEO of Children's Aid and Family Services, reflecting her lifelong dedication to the well-being of others. And whereas, Assemblywoman Sumter's integrity, vision, and compassion have left an enduring impact on her district and the entire state, inspiring future generations of leaders to serve with the same purpose and heart. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that is hereby publicly recognizing and applauds Assemblywoman Sumter for her exemplary service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the people of New Jersey, and be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Siobhan E. Sumter health and happiness in all her future endeavors, and may her work continue to inspire and influence positive change throughout the 35th Legislative District and the entire state of New Jersey for years to come. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Make yours.
Thank you. Thank you to our Director, Director Laporte. Thank you. He knew that I was not looking for any accolades, so he had Rodney call me. Truly, I remain grateful because you do not have to recognize the service that was lived. So I truly appreciate you all for being an example and a partner to me in this work. The work that we do and the work that we have done for the constituents of Passaic County came as a big result of the county. As all of you know, I'm from the city of Patterson, and we have financial trials in strife. Is that a good way of saying that? And we had bad credit. And when I entered the New Jersey Legislature, we had bad credit. This Commissioner Board had AAA credit, bonding capacity, and when I knew I needed to get things done, I can always call on the county for partnership to back the ideas and the funding of things like Hinchcliffe Stadium, the restoration of that. The return of local control of the school district in partnership with Passaic County. Our parks, our tennis courts, getting through a pandemic, still feeding people even today, that was the county as a pass-through to our city in support. And the work doesn't get done alone. So as I am transitioning into a new goal career, of course, I got to thank my family because my husband has been with me through it all and has accepted the time away from home. And to each of these elected officials, I'm so happy that this room is filled because we have to support good candidates and representation matters, especially today. And as we look at where our country is, and you just heard from a veteran who showed you his green card, let that impact not be lost on you, who talked about Patterson, that's one of the most diverse cities in the state, which is over 500 cities, let alone the country, and how he appreciates the ethnicity and diversity that goes along with that, and how we live as neighbors. So as you hear all the rhetoric and the noise, let's keep in mind that we're New Jersey. That opportunity is what we make it, and that we are stronger together, and we must uplift each other. So thank you, thank you, thank you, truly, for a resolution that Kenny is going to get tired of seeing, because I got to put them somewhere now. So I truly thank you for thinking enough of my service and partnership to recognize me today. God bless.
Everyone takes a turn? Putting the dice back? You could probably leave it there, because I think the next person's... Next on my agenda, we have Ms. Diane Williams from JBWS presenting on domestic violence services that her company is bringing to Passaic County using state funds, which I'm sure Assemblywoman Sumter helped secure, so.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I have to say that it is a complete setup that I have to go after some pretty amazing people, but I feel like I'm up to the challenge. So my name is Diane Williams. I'm the CEO of JBWS. We're a domestic violence organization that's been around for over 50 years. We were born in Morris County, and we have the opportunity to expand into Passaic County with a contract with the Department of Children and Families. So we started working with families just in June in Passaic County when we heard that some of the services might be going away. So the Department of Children and Families asked a few organizations to help out in the interim, and then they put out a contract for a bid. We bid for it, and we were awarded the contract, and we're so incredibly excited to partner with all of you, to partner with the amazing organizations that already exist in this community, to learn about this community, and to bring resources and to partner with you about the issue. And I'll tell you why it's so incredibly important. Because one out of four women, one out of seven men, and one out of three teenagers will be victims of domestic violence in their lifetime. That's a serious issue. It's a serious issue in every community, and this is not just a job, this is a mission for all of us. And so I wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to talk about what those resources are that are going to be coming to Passaic County. Many of them have already started. We did start temporarily, and as of November 1st, the contract is full-time JBWS. We have a 24/7 helpline. It's the same helpline number that has been in Passaic County for years. We are sheltering survivors of domestic violence. We have housing navigation for domestic violence survivors in need of safe, stable housing. We have legal advocacy services. Our legal advocates are sitting right in the courthouse, providing education and support regarding protective and court orders on site. We have two domestic violence liaisons that are sitting in the child protection and permanency offices, and we have a domestic violence response team that is working with trained volunteers that are dispatched to police stations and emergency rooms across Passaic County to support victims of domestic violence. So I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to some fabulous leaders that are going to be leading the work here in Passaic County. First, there's Diana Kurlander. She's our VP of Client Services. Kim Viafarra, the Director of Housing and Supportive Services. Kim Vargas, Senior Manager of Legal Advocacy Services. And Robin Hughes, the Senior Manager of Crisis Response, the Domestic Violence Response Team Program. So we're here to partner, we're here to learn, and we look forward to partnering with you moving forward. Please, if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us. We want to provide a support to you, and we're going to make a difference together. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any questions, Commissioners?
If I may, Director, I don't have a question per se. I just want to make a comment. I recently visited Hawthorne where we presented them with their open space money. And the council was very adamant about this particular program because the previous organization that was running it went into some financial troubles and pretty much shut down. And so I'm glad to see that we have a new organization that's taking the lead on this. It was very near and dear to the borough of Hawthorne and to their council members that we have a program that can really be effective to help these individuals that deal with domestic violence. So I'm happy to see a program back, an organization that's taking the lead, and I wish you guys all the success.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have a presentation recognizing some of our youths that went through our Passaic County Youth Leadership Retreat. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Cruz. I'm also going to call up Darrell Sparta, our Parks Director, and Carrie Klug, our Rec Supervisor.
All right. There she is. We were going to call you up, give you a grand entry. So again, this was also not set up, right? I'm happy that we were able to honor our young people who participated in our Passaic County Youth Leadership Retreat up in Camp Hope. This team that's beside me leads that year after year. I've had the benefit of going up there and speaking at their closing ceremony and just hearing some of the testimony of our young people that have gone through the program and the real change and impact that it caused their lives. And so I'm happy that we were able to do this tonight where our young people can see all the facets of our county government at work, see individuals that they can one day hopefully aspire to be like, obviously, a legendary legislator here in Passaic County and in the state of New Jersey that has led the way on many advocacy issues. And we're able to honor her tonight. I'm happy that they saw that. An individual who served in our military and just decided not to pack up at the end of his term and go somewhere else or just stop working, but continuing his advocacy for veterans and his brothers and sisters in the armed forces that are continuing to struggle with various issues. They have one of the strongest voices and advocates here in Passaic County. And obviously, a nonprofit organization that is really dealing with real-life issues that maybe some of our young people are dealing with, and they just have no one to talk to about. So it's really a full-circle type of experience. And I'm glad that some of those that participated in the Youth Leadership Retreat, we're here tonight to experience that and see how everything comes together and how we can all work together to really help individuals in all different facets of life. So I am honored to be here, and this is probably our second year where we're honoring the young people. The program has been around for a few years. And I think what stuck out the most to me, and I don't want to steal much of you guys' thunder, but what stuck out most to me about this particular group was the connection they had to faith. And that was really a foundational part of them coming together. A lot of our youth that span throughout Passaic County participate in this leadership retreat. It serves a purpose of getting some of our young people to break out of their shells. It may be the first time in their lives that they're speaking about their feelings, just speaking openly to a group of strangers. And this group is able to get that out of them. And they create bonds that are a lifetime for them moving forward. And so our young people, you see the people that were honored here today. You see the work that happens on this dais. And hopefully, one day, you're sitting up there. Because if the work that we're doing is not inspiring you to want to do it, then what are we here for, right? And so we hope that you can continue to be inspired, not only by us, but by everything that you're also doing, and you inspire your friends and family moving forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Darrell first, or Carrie?
No, Jovan.
Jovan. See? So I'll turn it over to Jovan, who's one of the actual program coordinator. And she'll tell you a little bit about the experience up there. So Jovan, everyone.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to try this again. I work with college students, so I feed off of energy. So good evening, everyone. Okay. Forgive my back. Good evening, Council Commissioners, Administrator, Freeholders. Anyone else I may have forgotten. And to the community, a special shout-out to our students, right, and their families. So they will be coming up here shortly. But in case you're wondering, who is this lady with all this energy up here? So my name is Jovan Fernandez, and outside of this, I work at Stockton University. So that's why, rah rah, lots of energy. I'm a director over at Multicultural Center and have been in Student Affairs for 15 years and also done nonprofit work. So hopefully, that gives you some context. But this work pouring into the youth is my passion. It's my purpose. It's my calling. It's ministry work for me. So you don't need a pool pit to have a platform. You know, we do that work in other places. And as you heard Commissioner Cruz say, faith was a big, big part of this year's group. And I'll leave it up to one of our students to share her experience and give a testimony. But five years, five different groups, and each group has their own personality. You know, they had their own way of bonding, and it has just been such an honor. So now I'm going to get back on script. So as I mentioned, I'm Jovan Fernandez, and I've had the pleasure and honor of serving as the retreat leader for the past five years. And not with us this evening are four other amazing individuals who help with this work. So I'd be remiss if I did not mention them as well. Anthony, Jennifer, Dominic, and Sammy, who serve as the counselors and help. So I want to truly just express my sincere gratitude for this recognition, you know, for having us here and just being able to do this work. I have done a lot in my 15-year career in higher education, Student Affairs, but nothing compares to this. This truly has been the one thing that I look forward to, and it has been a blessing. And you know, Carrie, I tell you all the time, thank you so much. And to LeVar for just gifting this to me. I know that it was a blessing. And it's going to birth other things that I won't speak about today, but it was an answered prayer. So thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity and being able to watch our young people grow, lead, and tap into their potential that they have. I can't put it into words, though I'm a woman of many words. I don't have the right words to say what this really means to me and how it fills my heart and my spirit every year. But I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to LeVar and Carrie for trusting me with this. Your confidence, collaboration, and unwavering support make this not just possible, but deeply meaningful. So thank you all. And to the Commissioner, thank you for your yes. You know, we asked him to come last year, and I can't imagine it without him now, giving the closing remarks, you know, sharing his words of wisdom and just being real. You know, working with young folks, you have to be real. So I appreciate just how you share and you pour in and you allow not just the students, but their families to know that your voice matters. We need you. While we can't do this work alone, right? We're here in this room, and a lot of important decisions are made, but it's for the people. So how can you not have the people there that you're serving and supporting? So thank you for that. And although I'm a Trenton native, and I currently reside in South Jersey, I do feel led to serve this area. So with that being said, on behalf of, you know, Parks and Rec and the Youth Services Commission, we look forward to continuing this partnership and serving Passaic County and the greater North Jersey area. And something I'd like to leave you all with is this. True greatness is not in how many people serve you, but in how many people you serve, right? The leaders that you make. So I want us to keep that in mind each day as we go out and do the work that we do and always remember that why and the impact that you have. And while we may not get the thank yous and the accolades and moments like this, that's okay, right? That shouldn't be what we strive for. And just again, it's truly been an honor, and I look forward to the great work ahead. So thank you so much.
Thank you again. This is all script, but you are an honorary Passaic County resident because you spend a lot of time here. So I will gift you our Passaic County lapel pin. That way, you can wear it proudly wherever you go in the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, listen, I wear all three because there is a central, so that's why I say all three.
Taylor ham or pork roll?
It's Taylor ham.
Okay, good. That's your Passaic County pin. You can wear it proudly. I will add before I call up Carrie and Jovan again to call out the names of the students that are here. This is an award-winning program. Last year, the New Jersey State Parks and Recreation Commission awarded Carrie and the team in their annual conference in Atlantic City, awarded them a Program of the Year. And it was our Passaic County Leadership Retreat that received that award. So that's something to definitely be proud of where our work is recognized statewide. And so at this time, I'll ask the team to call the students up, and then we'll pick one, right? One is going to give their testimony so you guys get the real feel of what they experienced up there.
So when we call your name, just come on up.
No? Okay. Nathaniel? No, I don't see Nate. Okay, so first up, Emma Howard. Amara Salazar. Matthew Shaheen. Jocelyn Rivera. Gabriel Rodriguez. Jordan By. Xavier Emanuel Perez. Zaki Robinson Johnson. Angie Perez. Augusto Kelly. Aleah Crespo. Okay, and I believe that's everyone that's here with us this evening. Oh, Jai Asia, I didn't see you back there. Jai Asia Rose, come on up, girl. Here you go. Is that everyone for real this time? No? Okay. All right, so we have Jocelyn's not here, Chase Miller, Kiara Williams. See what happens when they sneak in here and we don't see them. Is that everyone now? Yes? All right. So let's give them another round of applause. Because some of them came right after school ended. Like, school ended on, let's say, like a Friday. They were with us by Saturday. So, you know, we honor your time, your attention, because that was a long four days, right? But we just thank you for the commitment to seeing this through. And I just want to say, this year, we tripled our applications. We had 91 applications, which in the beginning, we had a little less than 20. So to have 91, and we had 16 recipients who we selected. So that tells you a lot about these young folks that are standing before you this evening and just the greatness that they bring. So take pictures, remember these faces, remember these names, because you will see and hear more great things coming from them soon. But speaking of great things and hearing from folks, I'm going to ask Aleah to come up here, who's going to share her testimony and what her experience was like here at the retreat this year.
You're all right. So some of them behind you that are still nervous about speaking. You're good.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aleah Crespo. I'm 18, and I go to Wayne Valley High School. I attended the 5th Annual Passaic County Leadership Retreat over the summer, and I wanted to take a moment to share how this retreat impacted me in a positive way when it comes to not only being a leader, but opening my eyes to faith and how much I've grown with only a few days of the people I had just met. Throughout the retreat, I learned the importance of teamwork, communication, one's faith, and empathy. Engaging with others with different backgrounds and perspectives showed me powerful collaboration, how powerful collaboration can be in this world and can unite even when in uncomfortable situations, like sleeping in a cabin full of girls you just met three hours before. But like Anthony told me, be comfortable getting uncomfortable. For me, it wasn't about leading others. It was about listening and understanding their ideas and feelings. The workshops and challenges pushed me outside of my comfort zone, helping me develop confidence with problem-solving skills that I know that have benefited me and is going to benefit me in the future. I realize that leadership is not about being the loudest in the room. It's about inspiring others and working together to achieve common goals. As much as I wanted to stay there forever with the amazing people I met, I'm glad we can all be here together today to share this moment. The first night, I brought my Bible because I had intentions of keeping myself to pass the time by by reading my Bible. But that changed very quickly when we had our first meal together, and I sat down to pray by myself before I ate. But Angie saw me, and she asked me if she could pray with me. Then Amara joined, and then Joss joined, and we openly asked everyone else if they wanted to join us, and we all prayed together. For the rest of the retreat, no one was left alone at any time, not even the quieter people and the people that isolated themselves always had someone with them. Everyone deserves to feel included, and some people don't have that. And I think a retreat like this should be offered everywhere and not just Passaic County because it really influences people in small ways that you will find someone and you will find the people around you to help you. I want to thank Mr. Carrie Klug, Jay Marie, and our counselors, Jen, Sammy, Ann, and Dom, and the amazing staff that put the retreat together. I really pray that this retreat started by you guys, opened doors for other schools, counties, towns, or even states. Everyone deserves a chance to experience something like this. We've turned into not only friends, but a family. And when you least expect it, God will work in weird ways and bring you what he knows that you need. And God brought me this retreat. He also brought me the most amazing friends that I could ever ask for within the four days of us being there. But most importantly, after all that, I want to be able to thank the friends that I made along the way. We all came in expecting things different and not knowing what we were going to have, but we all left knowing that we learned what the true meaning of leadership was. And we learned to understand one another, even in our most vulnerable moments. Thank you.
Guys, let's hear it for this group one more time, please. I will tell you that, you know, we're going to take a group photo with the Commissioners. You know, God truly puts you in positions where he needs you to be. And at the moment, you may not understand why, but one day you will, and you'll understand why he connected you with particular individuals. And that's truly what it's about. I think for adults, that goes the same way, right? And so just understand that if something may not seem the way it should be at the moment, it all makes sense at one day. And so I thank you guys for sharing your experiences. Hopefully, you can be mentors and be an example for others that come before you in this program and in just every facet of your lives. So congratulations again, and God bless you all.
All right, so.
Yeah, Lizzy, go ahead.
You guys are really good.
Yeah, Lizzy, go ahead.
You're fresh.
She found it, she found it.
Oh, I'm sorry. He'll have to teach him.
All right, so systematically, we like look left, and then just kind of make our way to the right.
I'm gonna go on the same first, the other ones, so then we'll just all like it out.
Everybody look straight first.
Thank you.
So the left.
Just look straight.
One with left.
No, not left.
We're good?
All right, guys. Good?
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good.
All right.
Good job.
That was right.
Wait, you got your pin?
You got your pin?
Are they giving her?
That's not like a get out of jail free card.
No, it's honorary.
Next, the Passaic County Sheriff's Office recently successfully went through an accreditation process, and on behalf of our Sheriff, Thomas Adamo, we have Under Sheriff Wheeler and Under Sheriff Tangora, I'm gonna call you guys up.
May I just, I apologize for being in my back, it's a way this podium is set up. My name is Harry Doggardo, and I am the Accreditation Program Director for the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, and I'm here today to honor the Passaic County Sheriff's Office. And that is because, and just to add context, out of nearly six hundred law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that could apply for this program, for accreditation, only about fifty-four percent of those have made it, because it is such a rigorous process. So if you indulge me for two minutes, I'd like to explain to you the significance of what they have accomplished. So the Passaic County Sheriff's Office has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level, and highly regard the statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, has helped to transparently demonstrate the professionalism, transparency, and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies in the state's public safety system. Now, during these uniquely challenging times and the threat to health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement. This prestigious accredited status demonstrates Sheriff's Thomas Adamos' firm's commitment to state and national standards, and the continued expectation for quality, professional, and ethical policing of the Passaic County Sheriff's Office. Now, briefly, accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's ability to meet community needs. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently, and also meet community needs, and officers in accredited agencies, and we have some of them here tonight, can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for the professionalism and adhering to higher standards. Now, there's a report at the end of this long journey, and Detective Amanda Putz-Winski, I told you I practiced his name, but as soon as I got up to the podium, it just would not work. So I apologize to Amanda, but anyway, she knows exactly, because she went through that journey with many of us. So at the end of that long process, there is an onsite assessment, we make sure that there's a hundred percent compliance, about a hundred and eighteen standards in the state of New Jersey. So from that report, I'll just briefly paraphrase. On the Sheriff Thomas Adamo, a high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is evident within the agency. Where the future issues deal with officer recruitment, retirement, eligibility, or budget constraints, the Passaic County Sheriff's Office will continue to move forward with a commitment to following best practices, a preparedness plan, and verification of excellence. So it is the opinion of the assessment team of the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, it's a highly professional and committed agency, which exemplifies all of the tenets of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. So it is indeed here, it is indeed my honor here tonight, when we have the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, to congratulate Sheriff Thomas Adamo that couldn't be here tonight, accreditation manager Detective Amanda Putz-Winski, the members of the Passaic County Sheriff, the commissioners, the commissioner director, commissioners, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for having achieved their state accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this commitment to excellence in policing. So do indeed, congratulations. This is where you get to. Congratulations.
So I would, I just like to say, I was asked to come here tonight on behalf of Sheriff Adamo, he was unfortunately not able to make it, we're looking forward to this tonight, he had a family emergency, so he asked myself and Under Sheriff Wheeler to accept this certification, and like the chief was saying, this process is very, very entailed, and a long process, and it requires a lot of, a lot of information, and back and forth with the chief's association to acquire this. But when Sheriff Adamo took office less than a year ago, he was committed to ensuring the trust with the community, and making sure that he's going to be leading a top-notch police and law enforcement agency, and also to lower the liability of the department by making sure that our officers, our men and women out there, are following the guidelines and directives that are constantly changing within the state of New Jersey. So he was committed to this, and we put a lot of manpower to accomplishing this. So we're very, we're very proud to receive this tonight, and hopefully, this is going to help us to move forward and continue to serve Passaic County with pride and positive leadership. So I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners, and also County Commissioner, sorry, County Administrator Matt Jordan, for helping to provide the tools and the funds that we need to accomplish things like this. Thank you.
They're gonna come down for a picture.
I'm doing this.
Can we take a picture?
Take a picture.
See, it's easier when you have. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
One, one thing I would, I would be, I missed is Detective Potawinski was the, our team, she headed our team in accomplishing this, and was able to get this done, and is soon to be promoted to Sergeant Potawinski. Thank you. All right, last on my agenda, I am honored, as Passaic County's representative on the NJAC Board of Directors, to present Commissioner Duffy with a plaque for his induction into the NJAC Hall of Fame. So Commissioner, will you join me at the? Yeah? So, and John Donadio sends his regrets, he's sorry he couldn't make it tonight.
See him in a couple of days.
The New Jersey Association of Counties, County Commissioners Hall of Fame, class of two thousand twenty-five, in recognition and great appreciation for your outstanding leadership, tireless dedication to county government.
You're probably better off.
I don't do this a lot. And two decades of public service as an elected county commissioner in the great state of New Jersey, for Terry Duffy, Passaic County Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Well, what can I say, it's twenty-one years. What about the little guy? He doesn't get anything, or? Nothing for you? I feel so, so, so sorry, not that sorry for him, actually. It's been, it's been a great, great run here, twenty-one years, it really has. We've accomplished a lot, not just myself, my running mate, but the rest of the team here, and the team that's not here. If you look around the last couple of years, we've really, you know, Matt's come on board, Tony DeNover. I want to thank the chairman of Passaic County, of course, for letting, letting me run, and also Bill Pasquerel, who's a good, good friend, who's no longer with us, and of course, the honorable, which I, I went to the Licensed Beverage Association, so I worked down in Trenton, and worked with that, but it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Passaic County, and I wish them dearly all the best, and thank you for twenty-one years of, of an honorship, to be, to be, first a freerunner, and we got all kinds of names for that now, Commissioner, and on to bigger and better things, I thank my family, and thank you. Thank you again.
You don't want to take a picture with us?
Oh, yeah. Come on, Rodney, picture.
I did my hair for you, taking this picture.
Isn't this smooth, Joe?
We outsourced him today.
Come on, ship it home.
No, I will.
Take no responsibility.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Director? I'd just like to make an announcement that at our next meeting on Tuesday, December ninth, we will be paying recognition and honor to both our Director, Pat Lepore, and to our Commissioner, Terry Duffy. Yeah, yeah, I know.
Call me Terry, sorry.
I said Terry Duffy. Oh, yeah. Well, I'm glad you, I'm glad you pointed that out. Anyway, December ninth, Tuesday, five thirty.
And, yeah, Director, one more thing, everyone knows that in early November, SNAP benefits were suspended because of the federal government shutdown. For about seventy-six thousand Passaic County residents, thirty thousand Passaic County children, the county government snapped into action, serving seven thousand nine hundred residents over the course of those two weeks through emergency grants to food pantries, through emergency food distribution events at Mount Pilgrim, and Calvary Baptist, and Patterson and Passaic, respectively. I just want to recognize, and I'm gonna miss some names here, and I apologize before if I do, but all of the people that jumped into action in a tight, two-week timeframe, led by our Human Services Director, Artie Kakar, her entire team. Steve Orsini, and all of his team in buildings and grounds, working on the weekends. And I'm gonna go through them quick now, but Shirley Force, our Senior Services Director, putting a hot meal together at our nutrition site. Sherry, our purchasing agent, our County Council, our CFO, getting contracts on, getting vendors paid on emergency basis. Sheriff Adamo, his entire team, Captain Gagliostra, Detective Hardy, who ran all the operations to make sure everything could get there safely. Lindsey Reed, in my office, who did a lot of communications through the weekends, on Halloween, trick-or-treating with her daughters, and still getting things out, so people knew where to go. Tim and Maeve, in my office, who are out giving out food boxes, all of the commissioners and elected officials who showed up to distribute food boxes. I know I missed people, but it really was, I think, why we all do this, and I want to thank all of you for giving us the resources we need to do that, and step in when frankly, the federal government wasn't doing their job. So, I just want to, Director, and if I forgot anyone, I'm sorry, but thank you all. And that is all I have, Director. No late starters?
No.
Okay. Under Commissioner Reports. Did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, you. Want me to go first? Okay. You ready? Okay. You should come under Communications, but I'm gonna take the opportunity to read it now. Kind of self-explanatory, goes along with the Administrator was just talking about. It's from Iris LaLooz, or LaLooz. I hope this message finds you well. I would like to extend my deepest gratitude for the food package I received today. Having spent my life serving others, I never imagined that one day, find myself on the receiving end of assistance. After losing my job due to illness, and subsequently battling throat cancer, I have come to rely on several community resources. Your thoughtful support has made a meaningful, meaningful difference during an incredible, challenging time. These are uncertain days for many, and your compassion, responsiveness, and dedication to people of our community are truly immeasurable. Your care reminds us that we are not alone, and I am profoundly grateful. And this last paragraph is really what caught my attention. As I continue to regain my voice, I would be honored to be considered for future community initiatives. I have proudly served as a community ambassador for more than forty years, and would welcome the opportunity to assist with food pantry support, warm clothing drives, outreach to the unhoused, shelter service, or any other needs. With sincere appreciation, Iris LaLooz. Now that, my friends, is a true hero. Deputy Director?
I do have two, actually. The first one is, this is past two weeks, when we fed almost eight thousand people. Our county administrator is being way too humble, because as soon as he heard that we were gonna have trouble with feeding people through SNAP, he jumped, and he got everybody moving. So, and we know that without the cooperation, dedication, and hearts of everybody here, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did. But, again, Matt's being very humble, and we do owe him, straight across. You do. And then my other thing is about Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools. We got, we all got this text message the other day about Instant College Decision Day. From Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools alone, one hundred and sixteen acceptances to college. We're done already. And, over a million dollars in scholarships have been granted to those people. Those people, those kids. But, I really want to say that, again, we look at another organization like Passaic County Tech, and it's everybody, hands on board, get the job done, get our kids into a future where they can make a living. And they take that very, and Dr. DeVore knows this very well, she works so hard with our students up at Passaic County Tech. So, I'd just like to say, congratulations to the school, congratulations to the students, a huge congratulations to the educators up there, the administration, and everyone who works together to make sure our kids get the very best education that they can. So, thank you.
Mr. Barlow? You good? Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, Director. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues in congrat, well, not congratulating, but commending the work and effort that this team, meaning the administration and the directors, put forth to, to help our most needy and most vulnerable population, when, when the time called upon us to do so. And so, I also want to congratulate you guys for the hard work that was done, and since my colleague, Commissioner Lozera, mentioned tech, I'll just end with congratulating the PCTI Bulldogs for winning the Group Five North One Championship for the sixth
I do have two, actually. The first one is, these past two weeks, when we fed almost 8,000 people, our county administrator is being way too humble. Because as soon as he heard that we were going to have trouble with feeding people through SNAP, he jumped and he got everybody moving. So, and we know that without the cooperation, dedication, hearts of everybody here, we wouldn't have been able to do what we did. But again, Matt's being very humble, and we do owe him a straight applause. We do. And then my other thing is about Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools. We got, we all got this text message the other day about Instant College Decision Day. From Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools alone, 116 acceptances to college. We're done already. And over a million dollars in scholarships have been granted to those people. Those people, those kids. But I really want to say that, again, we look at another organization like Passaic County Tech, and it's everybody hands-on board, get the job done, get our kids into a future where they can make a living. And they take that very, and Dr. DeVore knows this very well. She works so hard with our students up at Passaic County Tech. So I'd just like to say, congratulations to the school, congratulations to the students, a huge congratulations to the educators up there, the administration, and everyone who works together to make sure our kids get the very best education that they can. So thank you.
Thank you, Director. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues in congrat, well, not congratulating, but commending the, the work and effort that this team, meaning the administration and the directors, put forth to, to help our most needy and most vulnerable population when, when the time called upon us to do so. And so I also want to congratulate you guys for the hard work that was done. And since my colleague, Commissioner Lazar, mentioned tech, I'll just end with congratulating the PCTI Bulldogs for winning the Group Five North One Championship for the sixth time in history with a score of, yeah, 56 to 42 over West Orange. And so congratulating those young boys and, and the entire coaching staff and people over there for the hard work that they put in to ensure that our young people are striving at their best, and good luck to them on the future championship game, which I think is this Friday. So, yeah, so, it's the state final, right? And are they playing at Rutgers again? At MetLife. So we'd be cheering our PCTI Bulldogs on. I know my Commissioners and I will be, I know last year, or two years ago, I think Commissioner Bartlet and I attended the championship game down at Rutgers Stadium. And so.
And it was cold.
It was cold. And so they'll be at MetLife. So I'll let the boys and the coaches and all know that Passaic County will be rooting you guys on, and, you know, we wish you guys all the best. So thank you.
Commissioner DeVore.
Thank you, Director. Of course, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thanking everyone in Passaic County because when we ran, we wanted to make sure we added to what makes Passaic County move, and we've been moving pretty well this year. So thank you to all the Directors and the County Director, as well as Administrator. But I want to take this opportunity, because it may be the last opportunity I do it publicly, to thank my sister, my boss, my mentor, my confidant, my New Jersey road dog for 12 years. You know how I feel about you in reference to why I'm sitting here? If you saw me, you saw Assemblywoman Sumter. I thank my big brother Kenny Sumter for asking me 14 years ago to do something. I didn't know what I was getting into and what I was doing, but I trusted my big brother and said, sure, why not? Let's do this. And 14 years later, I sit on this seat because for 12 years, like I mentioned before, I learned from you. You have been an inspiration to New Jersey. You have been an inspiration to Passaic County. And I want to say to you, you are the bomb.com. You are the GOAT of diplomacy and democracy. And for that, I wish you the best. God bless you. And when you outsourced me in 2020 to Passaic County, I had no idea you were giving me away. But for that, I publicly say, as a County Commissioner of Passaic, thank you and God bless.
Commissioner Duffy, you have any? Okay. Before we move on, I just want to correct something. Earlier this evening, prior to the Assemblywoman getting the award, someone said something about losing you. That, that is a great, a gross negligent, it's, it's a terrible thing to say, number one.
I think that was me, Director. I'm sorry.
And the reason I say that is, and this serves as a warning to my colleagues here. Don't let that sweet, calm face fool you. Mess up, and she will be right back on that podium giving you both barrels. I've been there, done that. Siobhan, thank you so much for your service. You're close to my, you'll always be close to my heart. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to open the public portion.
So moved.
Second. DeVore, second. By Bartlet, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet, Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes, and remember, all your comments will be a matter of public record. Come on up. Come on down.
Spot my, oh.
Sorry Duffy.
The Commissioners, this is something historical for me. 30 years ago, I moved from the great state of New Jersey, Passaic County, to Orlando, Florida. I've been there for 30 years. But in the 30 years before that, and '77, I may not look it, I was here since I was 20 years old. My mentor was the late Robert Roe. My first incursion in politics was helping him to get elected Congressman. And every other politician that ran for Governor, Senator, Congress. It's a lot of emotion to see there and to listen and see the young people, everyone that has something to contribute. Let me tell you, the most beautiful part of a human being is human empathy for their fellowmen. Over there where I am, I am very much involved in politics, state, and nationwide. I had not stopped. I always been a community advocate for those who need for someone to speak for themselves. And sitting there and just going back 30 years into the past, and it's very emotional. So I am so glad that I got the courage to come in. And I want to thank my daughter, Jacqueline Mestre, who is also the second-generation community advocate, for inviting me to come here tonight. So keep up with the good work. Remember, if you draw a circle and you put a line in the middle, it's the people from the line down that want to need you the most. Because the people from the line up, they have everything they need. Thank you. God bless you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
Seeing Owen at the podium, I moved to close the public portion.
Motion made by Duffy to close.
Second that.
Second by Cruz, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet, Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. L1 Resolution authorizing the Chief Financial, oh wait, wait, take that back. Take a motion on L1.
So moved.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Consent agenda, is there any items on the consent agenda that the Commissioners want to vote on separately? Okay. All right, I'll take a motion for, on the consent agenda of M1 to M82.
So moved.
Second.
Made by DeVore, second by Lazar. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. New business, personnel?
Move the personnel.
Second.
Motion made by Cruz, second by Bartlet on the personnel. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet, Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. The Bills need a motion?
Move the Bills.
Second.
Made by Cruz, second by Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Before I call for an adjournment, I want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and enjoy with your families. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Duffy, second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Safe trip home.